All right, good evening and welcome to our Wasika School Board regular meeting. Tonight is Thursday, November 17th, 2022. It is 5:30 PM and we are in the central building, second floor conference room. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, welcome everyone. Can I get a motion to begin tonight by, with an approval for the agenda?
So move.
Second.
First and a second, I think Grant might have had that one. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Moving on to recognition of visitors, we do have some visitors in the audience, but I'm assuming you guys don't need to come speak publicly. Everyone's good, all right. Just a reminder to anyone watching at home that you can send an email and we'll, we'll read your email in a future meeting. Or you're welcome to come in person as well. The email is wasikadistrict@gmail.com. And we do have a public comment policy that you can refer to on our website. Moving on then to payment of claims, Director Preve, you had the privilege this month to review our claims.
I make, I move that we pay the claims this month, accounts payable of $1,500,843.27, which does not include the October dental, and a payroll of $842,055.41.
And it does include the October dental.
I'm sorry, it doesn't.
Yes.
Yeah.
That is fine, we have a first, can I get a second?
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? Thank you for reviewing those claims. We will call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. All right, we'll move on then to our information items and we're going to begin with a building report from our area learning center director, Mandy Nohner. So do you want to introduce her?
Yeah, so, so as we move through our, through our building and apartment reports for this, for this year, we again want to give our thanks and say we're appreciative for Mandy for being here tonight to share with the board some of the great things that are happening at the area learning center here in Wasika. And also should say that Mandy had an opportunity here in early August to step in and be the director for this particular academic year, the area learning center, which probably changed her plans of how school year was going to start for her. But she has jumped in and done an exceptional job of, of leading and continuing to work through our mission at the ALC and, or having a good start to the school year. Not without its challenges and work as we all have, but I couldn't be more appreciative of her stepping into that role August 1st, really, with the conversation happening like July 31st, like, in terms of that, so we're appreciative of that. So I would turn it over to her to just share with you what's happening at the ALC and then see what questions you may have.
Okay, thanks.
I actually want to say thank you for the opportunity because this has been something that I've always really wanted to do since I started at the ALC in 2007, so I feel like it's been a long time coming for me to get the opportunity, so thank you. So, it's, it's been quite the start at the ALC this year, but it's been a really good start. I just want to start out by saying that we serve Wasika and the surrounding district. And our focus really is on meeting the needs of the students and all of their individual needs. And it does, you do have to qualify to come to an ALC and it's called the Graduation Incentives Program. You don't have to click on it, but if you ever are interested in looking, you certainly can. With our junior high program that serves the seventh and eighth graders, we like to keep a max of about 12, depending on the chemistry of the students, of course, and a max of 20. The state recommends 15, but again, for the ninth grade to, it is age 22, 21 typically, but if you have special education services, it is 22, but again, max of 20 depending on the chemistry. And really, our goal at the ALC is for a student to either go on to post-secondary education or to get, to gain full employment, be a productive citizen. And students have the option, if they want to get a Wasika diploma or their home district diploma, and then we would go off of that home district's graduation requirements, so. So, right now, we have 70 students enrolled, six junior highs, 64 at the high school, 13 of them receive special education services. We have 35 in our night school right now, and there are three sessions. We started with 35, we're going to possibly open it up to more, just depending on how it goes. And so we get three sessions a year out of that, and then we do offer summer credit recovery. And this is a true credit recovery model where they can start at where the percentage that they left off and just recover the rest of that credit. In the future, I would like to do night school like that as well. Our daytime program has six hex semesters. We take a traditional trimester and we cut that in half, so instead of three trimesters, it's six hex semesters. Students get more opportunity to fill in the classes that they need, that they have possibly missed. The ability to earn their diploma becomes much more attainable in that timeframe. They might have had three bad weeks, they get another chance to start over again, so they don't have to wait out 12 weeks. We also have independent study for students that are having, or that they can show have internal motivation. We also have started an apprenticeship with Crystal Valley this year. We had the apprenticeship with Cinch last year, but we actually have a student that finished his high school requirements with Crystal Valley. He's actually going to finish up this semester and it was, it was really good for him to get out there and get that experience, so. We are actually fully staffed as of Tuesday, so that was, that was a really awesome thing for us. So you can, you know, if you want to read through those teachers there. Our class sizes are, again, 10 to 20 depending on the class and the needs. And we have about a 10 to 1 ratio, again, totally depending. Actually, yeah, I actually had four, I must have lost one along the way, but this is a brochure, so if you could maybe share. Just, we made up this brochure this year to kind of just get the information out there to other school districts if they had questions about our program. And our mission and vision and sort of, kind of what we have going on is right up there if you want to see it. It's basically to make sure that every student is given the opportunity to have a successful future. And we take in their individual needs and we just embrace them and find a pathway for those students to be successful in life. We have high expectations for their learning, we take in their social and emotional wellbeing, we pride ourselves on having high-quality dedicated educators and a positive culture and climate, as well as a safe environment, so. So, we measure our students' success based on something maybe a little bit different than other traditional educational settings. We look at the attendance and how much credit that they have recovered since they've come to us. So, what I did was I looked at last year's amount of credit earned in the first hex semester, since it's all the farther we've gotten this year, and I compared it to what the students are earning this year. And we actually went up about 21%. And something that I implemented this year was a little bit different attendance policy. And with the clear expectations, enforcement of the consequences, and positive reinforcement, the students were able to increase the amount of credit that they have, they have earned. So, it's, it's working so far, we're hoping it continues. So here are our focus areas, building relationships, offering the students their voice and choice in kind of what they learn and how they learn it and how they're going to demonstrate, you know, their ability to show that they have mastered the content, and then their graduation and credit recovery. So, that's our focus areas, really. We do a lot of, every Friday, we do a symposium, and that is something where maybe they haven't gotten the opportunity to ice fish, and so we'll take them out ice fishing. Or we started the year painting a mural down at the side of the Neighborhood Service Center. Rain did not cooperate with us this year, so it was, we, we got it started, we'll finish it in the spring. Tomorrow, we're having a beanbag tournament. If anybody likes to play beanbags, come on over, it starts at noon. So it's different things. Taekwondo was last Friday, so. Our math teacher is a black belt in taekwondo, so she kind of helps the kids learn how to do that, so, cool. Anyway, helps with the relationship building. It looks like Elizabeth is part of our ALC, doesn't it? So, we can help connect students with resources outside of high school, so we just went to the Connect Tomorrow field trip a couple days ago, or was it yesterday? Regardless, we give them the career seminar class and then they're allowed to earn extra credits, we're working. We love to do what we call forced family fun. They don't always want to do it, but we do it, we make them do it. Like next week, we're cooking a Thanksgiving meal with them and then we'll all sit down at big long tables in the hallway and eat the meal together. We'll decorate a Christmas tree. We really work on acceptance of others and their differences. We're in the middle of Kindness Week right now, they get these kindness tickets. And then like today, I drew for some wireless earbuds and, you know, the junior high kids get, got something else and, you know, we do things like that, so. And I just wanted to mention that Dawn Skinner won Teacher of the Year. And as, as long as I have been in the district since 2005, that's the first time an ALC teacher has been given the Teacher of the Year. So we were all extremely proud and just over the moon for her, so. She also is putting on another play this year, she usually puts on a play about social justice issues. And it's November 30th, there's actually two, Why Darkness Seems Bright and May I Have Your Attention Please? The matinee is at 1:30 and then there's an evening performance there. And you're all invited to attend, I think it should be, should be pretty good. Cool. There's just some pictures of our symposiums that we've done. Yep.
Any questions?
So what hours are your night school for the students?
3:30 to 5:30.
Okay.
Yep, and they don't, they don't have to come.
Okay.
Every night, there's, we do an online program called Apex, which allows them to test out of things that they already know.
Okay.
And they'll, they have to be there monitored for like the pre-test part.
Okay. And is that the number of kids you have in your night school, is that included in the 70 that you have in the ALC? Okay, that's additional to this.
No, it's additional, 35.
Wow. Wow. And you had said that the state recommends 15 to 20 in a?
The state recommends 15.
And we have 64 in your high school?
Well, in a class.
In a classroom.
Oh, in a classroom.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. I was like, that, that confused me. That sounds better, thank you. So, good.
Great presentation, thank you.
I really like on your list of objectives, you know, building relationships is at the top, which seems like that would be core to really making your students successful.
Yes, I found that if you build a positive relationship with a student, they are willing to go above and beyond in really any aspect, especially behavior.
I like also this little flag, it's very nice. Finally, I can see the, you know, I'm, we are all usually go to the, you know, the graduation ceremony, but this is very nice, thank you.
And I would imagine that's really helpful for the other schools that participate in our ALC too, so to be able to, as a first introduction to, this is what is, is an option and, yeah. Thank you.
We're very fortunate to be the, the host and the home of such a program that just cares about kids and cares about getting students to the next, the next stage in their life. And we're the regional leader of that in here for the districts that are surrounding by us. And, and Mandy and the team have, have just led that very, just positively continuing what we've got going on. So, we want to be an ALC that is known for being innovative and being forward-thinking. The, the credit option, basically I talked about the summer programming, I go into night school, that option with, where did you, where did you leave off, where do you need to go? That's innovative and that's allowing kids to get to the next level of their, of their life quicker, more efficiently and, and more effectively for what their needs are. So, thank you for your leadership in that regard and thanks to our entire team and appreciate you being here tonight.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mandy. All right, so then we'll move on to our superintendent report.
Yeah, good evening. And so, it was, I really appreciate hearing, hearing what's happening at our ALC as I see our students come and go from this building and, and come and go for the night programming from our, our high school students. To have access to that program is just so beneficial to, to our entire community. So, this week, I want to just highlight a few things about our strategic plan that we have going on right now that I think is of note, and, and then a few things about our community engagement that's happening, that'll be happening here in the next few weeks. So as we look particularly in our area of student support as our focus area of strategic plan, I want to start with tonight. You know, we talked last time about the impact of our interventions and about specifically thinking about the science of reading is some of the work that our teachers are working with right now and our, our principals have had access to that. One thing that, that Mandy did not come up in this conversation, but because of the graduation rate, different definition that we have of what success is, we have access to some support systems through this, through the Minnesota Department of Education that allows us, we are able to actually send our administrators to the letters training for free. I mean, for not without cost to us because of having access to that. So, while we don't necessarily always want to be on anyone's list, we want to take advantage of what that means in different areas. So focusing on interventions and science of reading with student support and how we, we help students get to where they need to go to that next level. The other piece in student support that we know is just so important right now is, is mental health and safety and security. And so I think that's something that is important for the board and important for our community to know is, is as we work through that, we are implementing and continuing to work on continued ways to practice, to review, to make sure emergency management systems are all in place. The policy committee will prevent, present to you tonight the reviewed policies, two of which involved our crisis policy and our health and safety policy, which there weren't changes to be made, but the reminder is that we review those regularly, we practice those regularly. And we're planning a, some more practicing with our administrators here coming up in the next two months with the school safety center, helping do some practice drills for us, so we can continue to make sure our students are, are safe and secure and our staff is as well in our buildings. We've had walkthroughs in all of our sites this fall, which we do every so often with our partners, with our emergency management services, and they've recommended, you know, things to think about, but for the most part, our buildings are, are very, very secure. As long as we're following our protocols, which happens always for the most part when we control it, we, we have to still reduce a little bit of that prop in the door open every once in a while. But for the most part, our buildings are very secure, that, that's positive. In the area of workforce, one of the things that we are working hard to try to do is to honor some innovation and different ideas of how we bring new staff into our district. And so, for example, you're, you're familiar with professional teaching internship, which we've done the last few years, where we would, after the first of the year, hire one of our student teachers that has just graduated. They work as a sub for us in that spring in the building, as well as we pay for a three-credit grad class for them at Minnesota State, which is focused on professional development that Wasika Public Schools is, is working on, so they have an in with our district moving forward. Well, we, we have, we know that because of the way enrollment and job availability is right now, it may not always have a position for everybody right away the next fall. Well, we have an individual who is subbing for us right now, who did the internship in the spring. There wasn't a position in her particular licensure available, so she's subbing for us, she loves Wasika Public Schools, wants to be around. So we asked Minnesota State, well, can we just do it with her again and pay for a grad class? Let's re-credit grad, grad class, and we never thought of it that way. So we're, we're going to look at hopefully maintaining her and then hopefully we'll be able to hire her as, as the future goes on because she continues to do great work for us. So, thinking about those innovative ways to recruit and support staff into our district, we, we do have two student teachers who I met with just yesterday, who are showing some interest in the teaching internships, again for us this spring, which would add to our substitute teaching supply, as well as get some great teachers. I, I use the words with our, with our incoming teachers, both after they're hired and anytime I can talk to them beforehand, you know, you have to remember that we chose them, but they chose us, and that's really important. And so I told those, those two teacher candidates yesterday was, this is the we choose you part. This is the part, we, we hope that you will stay with us this, this spring, and now we hope that they choose to do that. Because a particular challenge with, with, with our type of community is that if we have a student teacher whose home base is another community and they move there, back there for the spring, the odds of them coming back to our community diminish quite a bit. And so how can we keep people engaged in our, in our school district? So I'm excited about that, and we're working on with that. And then the last thing I just wanted to comment on the strategic plan piece is just our teaching learning department and academic programming right now is just really diving in, really digging in on professional development, waiting, really looking at 30-day feedback loops on professional development and what's relevant, what we're teaching our staff to help support students. So we really can support staff to support students. And as I, as I listen and I talk to colleagues around the state, I hear a lot, as it well should be, about the, the things we need to do for students, okay? Which is, which is the foremost part of our mission. But how do we most lead that? By making sure our staff has what they need to be able to support our students. And so, we, we hope that our emphasis with, with Dr. Cinder Campoff, with Dr. Jennifer Clifton, with providing feedback loops, so if we do miss, if we do swing and miss, we know about it and we can help respond to that, our staff feels supported in that regard. And I, my conversations with our EA, just around day-to-day issues would indicate that that's, that's having success. So we're feeling good about that, supporting everybody. I'm excited about our fall results that we've got coming up. As Mandy indicated, her fall results at the ALC were exciting. Our, our DAC meeting will be coming up here in a few weeks, followed by a World's Best Broke Course report. We are, we are showing growth, our, our students are doing well. And that's, that's going to be exciting to share with all of you. And then I'm going to, the second bullet on here is community engagement, which I'm going to do a little bit of facilities community engagement piece, but also some of our community engagement from the strategic plan. So our Veterans Day programs were exceptionally well-attended. All three of our programs, I was able to be at the intermediate school and then at the, at the junior, senior high and well-attended. And we had great opportunity to honor the veterans in our community who were able to be there. As I was walking out of the junior, senior high, some comments of, that was our best speaker we've ever had. And so, Robert Tackett was the individual who spoke to our students that day and the feedback was extremely positive about his message to our students. But I also want to compliment our students. You know, when you have a group of young people, I think about the intermediate school or even our junior, senior high, that are having to sit and listen to something that's pretty serious and think about something that's very, deserves the respect, right? And our students, without a question, provided that to our community and represented us and themselves exceptionally well. So I'm, I'm very honored that our students recognize the opportunity to, to demonstrate what Wasika kids are, Wasika Blue Jays are all about. Also in community engagement, working on, continue to define our partnerships as Carrie Wad works through her work in terms of what looks like the businesses we're going to be working with and how student engagements or student work-based learning opportunities are going to come up this fall with Sandy Schumacher and into, into the new year. Looking forward to adding potentially some work-based learning opportunities here for students in the next year that, and Sandy is, is really leading the charge on that. So she's doing a nice job of, of continuing to provide more opportunities for students. I'm also involved with Advanced Wasika County, which is better known as Best of Wasika, probably for many of us. Kind of, we just, yesterday is the board kind of voted to kind of rebrand the working title as Advanced Wasika County. And really, the, the, the connection there is, that's been an entity that's been involved for nearly 20 years now in Wasika. But the, the role is really to engage, to partner, to network, to provide support. And one of the three 2023 projects that we're able to have them focus on is our Career Pathway Program and how they're able to support through networking, potentially some financial support if and when that time comes. But also just, if I need access to a particular business or a particular person in town, there's just much more networking that is involved there. So I'm very grateful to the leadership of Advanced Wasika County for, I've been on that board since I took this position, but now really starting to, to push into what can we do next. And then finally, just on that regard, and you're all seeing it, but the facilities communication plan is continuing to be implemented. It's prompted conversations in all, in everywhere I go, which has been, which tells me people are reading it and paying attention, which is, which is positive. And I think that our, what I'm hearing appreciated, and I, I mentioned this with our facilities committee earlier, I, I'm sensing the appreciation from our community that we're just, we're looking at our options, we're, we're taking this logically. We know we're going to have to make some decisions here before too long, but it's not going to be for lack of information, it's not going to be for lack of, of community input. We're going to continue to, to, to take that on a steady course, to do what's best for our students for the long run. Even though that is, at times takes some patience and at times means feels like we're talking about this yet again, yes, we are, because we're not going to, we're just going to keep moving forward with that process. So, I would again, just rec, just recommend, anybody has any questions about any of those things, please reach out to my office, to other me directly or to Caitlin and we can find a time to visit or with Elizabeth if you have financial questions, because we have always the opportunity to, to share with you what we're working on in that, from that angle. So I'm feeling good about that. And I also would remiss, would remiss if I didn't mention that it is National Education Week. And so I just want to again give kudos to all of our amazing staff, you as the board for your leadership, our administrators. We have got a, an exceptional school district in Wasika. We have our, our challenges that we could make a list that's quite long of, just like any other district in, in the world, right? But, but, and we have things we can continue to improve on always, 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 do we have things we can get better on. But our staff works, works very hard to provide the best environment they can for students and that's, that appreciation is, I probably can't say enough about that for our staff. And so, I have to honor that this week as we get into it too, so. Yeah, I would entertain any questions you may have about anything or anything else that you might ask about it and then we can, we can move forward from there.
Any questions or comments? All right, thank you, that was, that was really good report, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on then to our financial and enrollment reports from Elizabeth.
All right, thank you for your time this evening. I am going to share my screen here, I'm not quite sure which is up right now, so, let's see if it works. Just so you have access to some of these reports that are already linked in the agenda, I just wanted to touch a little bit on, we are back in the mode of looking at last year or the current year or where we're at in the budget. Right now, we're just sharing expenditures at this point. Through the audit process, the revenue looks a little different just because of the entries that are required to close out a year. So next month, we will look at revenues in addition to the expenditures. With expenditures, looking at a comparison as of October 31st, the two big categories that I look at specifically involve salaries and wages and employee benefits, just because that is 75% of our budget. just because that is 75% of our budget. And like I said, those are the first two categories that I go to, what we're tracking. How are we doing this year as compared to how are we doing this as last year? This is actually a three-year look when we look at the graph. And so as you can see, trending exactly where we have in the past couple of years. So rest assured, at this point in time, really, our budget's right on track. Other items I absolutely take a look at, but there might be rationale of maybe why there's a swing one year versus another year. A lot of that has to do with timing. So for example, if we were looking at an expenditure purchase, maybe a building improvement, that is all very dependent upon when that project actually happens. So I still do look at it. Overall, I look at the bottom line with all of our different funds and you can see basically 21% across the board for all funds for all three years. So again, just a great indicator that we're right on track with where we've been in the past. This is just another way to look at it. Did that switch for you? Yep. Okay. And this just gives more detail behind those numbers. So it's the exact same. So if you ever had a question, when it came more to our other funds that we have in the district, you can kind of see as well, again, that salary benefit, those are the main ones that I go to right away. And so again, tracking very well with there. The other one I want to look at is our monthly enrollment. So we have two different reports that we look at. We look at grade level. And so we do track that and we take a snapshot in time once a month and just try to see how are we trending? I'm going to flip to this one here. And then this gives us a five-year history of just overall student population. And as you can see, we did dip a little bit in November, but it's trending right alongside where we normally do. I think the positive note is that with October, we were able to hold on to some of our students longer than we did in prior year. And a lot of that does have to do with timing. It has to do with weather. And so again, trending along what we've done in the past and trending along right where we have been estimating and actually maybe a little bit higher than what our student count estimate was for our budget. So very pleased with where we're at at this point. And as you can see, again, kind of settling into what our new norm is maybe for our student count and being able to really use these numbers to help us project a little, you know, even more accurately for our future budgets. I will stop sharing this for a moment and just talk a little bit more audit process. Very close to being done at this point. I have not made any additional entries. Our auditors at this point are really just reviewing everything one last time to make sure that they've got everything covered. They've asked all the questions. Next week, in the Wasika County News, excuse me, you're going to see our November budget publication. So on that, it's an annual publication that we are required to do. All school districts are required to do. And what it does is it takes our fiscal year '22 starting balances. It takes into account our actual expenditures and revenues, gives a new updated ending balance, and then takes into account what our fiscal year '23 budgeted revenues and expenditures are. On that report, it is going to say that these numbers are unaudited at the time, which is true. But just for your reference, I have not made any adjustments to those numbers since I put that report together. Again, if we'd made any adjustments, it would be very slight. I don't see any swings that would occur with that. We did talk briefly as a finance committee where we think we're going to be trending with our audit. Again, very positive news at this point that I am aware of. And so I just wanted to let you know that that will be in the Wasika County News next week as a publication. And then I will also be posting it on our website tomorrow. And you can see all of our past year history as well, if you're ever interested in what that looks like. And that is the information I had to share with you this evening. Any questions that you might have for me?
And just so the board knows, I believe we were planning at our December workshop to do the audit presentation still. Is that still the plan?
Yeah.
And then we'll approve it at our regular meeting in December.
Yes, we've explored, we reached out to our auditor to make sure they're available for that evening to give the presentation.
Yep.
So that we have the opportunity to then have some time to digest it before we formally approve it.
Yeah. And then that kind of takes away from the truth and taxation.
Correct.
Focus of our regular December meeting. So yeah.
Yes, that is still the goal. Like I said, they're finalizing things right now. So just as long as we can continue to keep moving forward, that probably should work. But that's why I'm just, that little caveat in there. As long as they are able to finish where they're at. Again, they have other clients as well that they're working with, but that is absolutely our goal for us.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Elizabeth? Welcome, Addison. All right. Great. Then we'll move on then to our committee and board member reports. And you want to start us off?
Sure.
Sure.
I'll start with the superintendent evaluation committee. We had that this week. And one thing that we're going to be looking at is looking at how the data from the MCA scores is used. So we want to have the teachers and the administrators, they're looking forward, not just only backwards, which is just a nice way to work with the data and be purposeful. And then one of the questions that was brought up with the community engagement meetings that Eric's been having is the career pathways. So people are interested in hearing more about those. And then the finance was just kind of covered. And I did want to just kind of add that I thought this was interesting. I think it's something that I knew, but I'd kind of forgotten that with our food service, they have their own fund balance, but then they can only keep three months kind of in the kitty. And the pandemic threw a little bit of a clincher in there. So they're kind of evening out with equipment needs that they're going to be doing in the future. But the state has kind of given a, they've put a, like a hold on that requirement right now. And they're not, they don't know when that will be taken away. But that's just something that they need to watch a little bit. And then our fund balance is around 24%, so we're still within the range of where we want to be. It's a little bit lower than what we would like it to be, but it's still acceptable. And then our insurance and safety meeting, that was really interesting for a person who works in insurance, that all the different types of plans that you need to worry about and having pools. Because school is different than like with mine. I come with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And then you guys have different environments. So it was kind of interesting to see. I am glad I don't have to deal with that. And, but they work through it. And this year was a little bit tougher, I think, for a lot of schools with different claims. I mean, life gets in the way and people need to use their health insurance. So I think the team did an excellent job in working through that. So it was interesting to see.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
I will let Dave or Scott talking about the facility committee. And because I didn't take the notes and everything else was covered for me.
Okay. Thank you. Charlie.
Well, I attended two meetings. One was on the policy meetings, and we'll talk probably more about that. But was talked about visitors, naming the facilities, health and safety policy, crisis management policy, and then uniform grant guidance policy regarding federal revenue sources. And we'll talk about that probably a little later on. The other meeting I was at was the arena meeting. And I got the minutes here, but we, there's a floor repair. That was $3,500. That's something done with the floor. Ice painting. You know, it costs $2,800 to get that ice painted underneath there every year. That's just, that's something that I didn't. Openscape went well. We're talking about security cameras, maybe a locker room expansion. And sometimes scoreboard is 22 years old. So scheduling was a little issue. And then this R22. R22 is a new refrigerant that a lot of arenas are going to. And it's going to cost, I don't know, probably in the excess of half a million dollars. So there is a Mighty Ducks grant that you could get up to $250,000. So there's some things going on there. And I think that $30,000 that the school gives there is, they've, I think there's like $130,000 in that balance right now that they're just hanging on to and anticipating. So doing some good stuff there. Some new business. They've been talking about something with the coolers and all that stuff. And so then the last one was, the group discussed the concept of the school absorbing the arena building and operation. Charlie, who is the school board liaison, commented he does not believe the school would be interested primarily due to cost of operations. Currently, the school contributes $30,000 a year to the arena. So. Yeah, but I did note, they did note that the arena is going to be 30 years old next year. And a lot of the, in a lot of the equipment, life is 30 years. So this is where, this is where we're at on that. So just, it was around. I was around when that place was built. So it's kind of near and dear to my heart yet, you know. So anyhow, that's my report. So.
Thanks for speaking up on behalf of the school board. We appreciate that. But yes, it definitely, it costs money to run an arena. But I think for 30 years old, I think it's a, in really good years.
Wonderful facility. Wonderful facility. The folks, Kyle has been there, I think, for just about all 30 years. And he's, you know, really, shout out to him that he really has taken that building as his own. And it really, it's a little bit of a confusing situation because it is on school property, but the school doesn't really own the building, but it's on school property. A lot of other, a lot of other schools, the ice arena is maybe at a fairgrounds or the city or the, has taken it over or something like that. So we're very unique, but you know, it's an ideal location for this, rather than having it at the fairgrounds or something like that. It's just, it's handy for our students, you know. So.
Yep, definitely. Cool. Thank you, Charlie.
Yep.
Addison. So basketball started?
Yeah, if you couldn't tell, I ran straight from practice. And Lindsay is going to be here tonight, but we compiled a list of things.
Perfect. She sent me an email too, but I'm sure you're going to cover it all. So yes.
Okay. So first off, we're really proud of all our cross-country runners and Isaac Feldcamp for making it to state and doing so well. And then the indoor last week, I hope you all were there. But it went, it went really, really well. And we wanted to thank everyone who was there and who was a part of that because we know it's a huge commitment. The fall play, Little Women is showing this weekend. Please come. It starts tonight at 7:00 PM and then goes Friday, Saturday at 7:00 PM and then Sunday at 4:00 PM. So that's why Lindsay's not here. And our winter sports teams just started this week. And hockey even won their first game against Fairmont the other day. So that's a huge win for us. Student council is preparing for our winter activities and we are starting a food drive. So if any of you have children or grandchildren in the school, send them with non-perishable food items, toilet paper, money, anything. We would love to get your contributions. And that's all I think I have for tonight. Oh, Blue Jays last tomorrow.
Yes.
Saturday.
Saturday.
Tomorrow, you still have school. Thank you, Addison. So the food drive, is that going to be, it's not now, it's going to be?
No, it's going to run through December.
Okay.
So it's kind of, student council runs it. It's among this, like, the high schoolers, but obviously their parents kind of control the high schoolers. So we would love it if you sent any sort of contributions to that because we would really like to up our earnings this year.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you very much. Grant.
I was part of the policy committee as Charlie was also part of. And I think it's always good to have those good discussions because it gives us a chance to ask Eric and whatnot questions about how things run. And that was very good. And the finance committee, as Elizabeth mentioned as well, and we talked quite a bit about audit and how that's shaping up.
I attended two committee meetings, policy. And we just had a facilities committee meeting. And we continue to work on facility needs today, tomorrow, and into the future. The ball is still rolling. We'll see where it goes.
Mine were all covered.
Okay. Yeah, I think mine were covered as well. I just had, really, I think I just had superintendent evaluation committee. And Katie handled that. Well, I am looking forward to hearing those of you that are on the DAC committee because you're going to get the fall results in the World's Best Workforce. That should be really interesting. And I appreciate the district's commitment to forward thinking. I think that that is the right, the right way to think about some of these requirements and how they fit into what we're doing here in the district. So. Awesome. All right. So moving on then to recognitions and positive board feedback. And we do have one that's given for us right down here. And Mandy Nohner mentioned it also. Don Skinner is this year's, the 2022 WEA Teacher of the Year. So congratulations to Don. And then beyond that, well, you have anything you want to add to recognitions?
I just love that Don got it because when you're at graduation, she, you can see that she connects so well with those kids, with the plays that they put on. There's, she connects with them. It's really neat.
Very dedicated teacher. Yep.
Well, I, yeah, I just want to wish Happy Thanksgiving to everybody next week. And hopefully, everybody will be able to spend time with families and friends.
Thank you. And relax. Charlie.
Yeah, I'd like to just highlight the football team again. The football team did a wonderful job. They did, they did lose their final game to Fairmont, which was, which was a tough, it was a tough loss on the Voice. It was, it was a really, really tough loss. And you know, our quarterback got hurt during the game and things kind of went south after that happened. But, but they didn't give up. They didn't give up. They kept, they kept fighting, fighting, fighting right to the last play of the game. So I was really proud of the job they did. And it was to the indoor marching band concert, which was wonderful the other night. The kids are just, they just, they just do, they just do a wonderful job there. And Mr. Lawrence and all that, you know, he's doing, he's doing a great job there. So I just want to highlight them too, them too, that too. So.
Thank you.
This might be weird, but I wanted to thank all the careful drivers lately. If you haven't noticed, they're really bad out there. I'm scared to drive to school. So.
I almost thought about saying something about that because, yeah, I have also told my kids we have to leave a little earlier so I can go even slower to get to school. Yes.
My brother doesn't want to drive with me because I'm not a bad driver. I promise.
It was a bit of a surprise this week. Yes. Thank you. Great.
That's a great segue. I was going to point out, I've noticed every day driving, whether I've been going to school, that it is colder out, of course, there's snow. And yet there are crossing guards still at all the crosswalks that even in the snow and the cold, they're out there every day, dedicated, making sure all the kids cross well. There's the two on the highway up by the high school and the junior high. And then there's always one down by Hartley crossing there. So thank you to those who continue to make sure all our students get to school safe. I also saw the indoor, they did a great job. The students all did a great job too. So that was great. Eric, you mentioned it's National Education Week and all the staff and all the recognition they get. And, but you didn't say it, thank you also to you and all of what you do to make everything happen.
Thank you.
I have several. I went to the indoor the morning where you did it for, I'm just going to say, the little kids, the elementary kids. All the students from Hartley were there with team Sacred Heart. And it was really interesting and fun to be there with younger kids and the staff. And I think they really, the kids really, really got into it. And I think they really, really liked what they were seeing. And I talked to Mr. Lawrence for just a little bit before the start of the program. And I said, this is kind of a great recruiting thing for you, isn't it? And he goes, oh, yeah. He said, if we can get them interested at the elementary level, then as they get older, hopefully, they would want to be in marching band. I went to the Veterans Day program at Hartley. Again, very, very neat, very interesting, very proud of the kids and the staff. There were a lot of veterans there. There were a lot of other adults there. The kids were great. They were very well behaved, very respectful. They lined the hallways before we went in the gym with the staff. And then the, like the VFW and the American Legion color guards walked real slowly down through the school. And it was just so neat to see the kids, hands over their hearts, everybody behaving themselves, showing a lot of respect. And they sang some songs in the gym. And those were really cool too. I mean, they really, they really got into it. I was going to add too about American Education Week. Thanks for bringing that up. Monday, thank you to all cafeteria workers. Tuesday was paraprofessionals. Wednesday was teachers. Today was administration and clerical. And tomorrow is custodial maintenance and transportation. So well worth noting. And then national, well, it used to be National Honor Society. Now it's the Wasika Honor Society, part of the Minnesota Historical Society. Just recently inducted some. Just recently inducted some new members, and if I have my numbers right, we have, we had 27 seniors already in the Honor Society, Lindsay Kapetsky being one of them, and then 38 juniors were brought into the Honor Society, and Addie was one of those 38. So, congratulations to her and all the other students too.
Thank you.
Excellent, excellent. Well, I, everything that I was going to discuss is already been talked about, but I'm really looking forward to Sunday afternoon for Little Women, and the indoor was pretty cool. So, that's what I had.
Okay. I just wanted to mention, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Wasika Area Foundation had their fall grant awards, right? And they granted $110,000 to the, to the community. So, yep, so always amazing work that they do, and I know you help, or you're on the board for that too, and, but yeah, it's just, it's, it's always amazing that the amount of dollars that go back into this community, particularly from that foundation, so. So, I think that's all I had. If there's nothing else, you guys ready to move on to those action items? Very exciting stuff. Okay. Can I get a motion then for item A?
I make a motion to approve acceptance of received gifts and donations, and I think it was for?
Camera?
Camera for Mrs. Ross, donated by Mrs. Juan.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? I saw Lula on the other day, I should ask her what she's, what they're doing with the camera, that sounds fun, so. All right, if there's no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, never mind. We'll do a roll call. All those in favor for the roll call. Yes or no? Caitlin, please call the roll.
Grant Shepard?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes.
Scott Demel?
Yes.
Katie Youngberg?
Yes.
Adida Mansfield?
Yes.
Charlie Prebe?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes. All right, never mind, we'll move on. Item B, and Katie, if you could make a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution canvassing returns of votes of school board election.
Second.
Oh, she has to read.
Oh, she has to read the whole thing.
All right, so the resolution canvassing returns of votes of school district general election, be it resolved by the school district of independent school district number 829 as follows. One, it is hereby found, determined, and declared that the general election of the voters of the district held on November 8, 2022 was in all respects duly and legally called and held. Two, as specified in the attached abstract in return of votes cast, a total of 6,269 voters of the district voted at said general election on the election of four school board members for four-year terms on the first Monday in January, next following the election, general election as follows. Scott Demel, 1,991. Jonathan J. Michaels, 817. Charles Prebe, 2,669. Dave Dunn, 2,172. Alyssa Bowers, 2,667. Andrew J. Isker, 1,289. Theron Avery Kruger, 2,387. Robert Dickerson, 896. Wrighton, 47. Three, Charles Prebe, Alyssa Bowers, Theron Avery Kruger, and Dave Dunn, having received the highest numbers of votes, are elected to a four-year term beginning the first Monday in January 2023. Four, the school district clerk is hereby authorized to certify the results of the election to the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located in whole or in part.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call, as is a resolution, so Caitlin, please read the roll.
Grant Shepard?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes.
Scott Demel?
Yes.
Katie Youngberg?
Yes.
Adida Mansfield?
Yes.
Charlie Prebe?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes. All right, motion carries unanimous. And then our next motion, or our next item, item C.
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of certificates of election. The resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing school district clerk to perform other election-related duties, whereas the board has canvassed the general election for school board members held on December 17, 2022. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number 829 Wasika, State of Minnesota as follows. The chair and clerk are hereby authorized to execute certificates of election on behalf of the school board of independent school district number 829 to the following candidates: Charles Prebe, Alyssa Bowers, Theron Avery Kruger, Dave Dunn, who have recently, whoops, sorry, who have received a sufficiently large number of votes to be elected to fill vacancies on the board caused by expiration of term on the first Monday in January, next following the election, based on the results of the canvas. The certificate of election shall be substantially the form attached thereto. Three, after the time of contesting, the election has passed, and the candidate has filed all campaign financial reports required by the Minnesota statutes. Chapter 211A, the clerk of the school board is hereby directed to deliver the certificates to the persons entitled thereto personally or by certified mail. Four, the clerk is hereby directed to enclose with the certificate a form of acceptance of office and oath of office in substantially the form attached hereto. Glad I'm not a lawyer.
Thank you for that motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Thank you. And just for a note, also attached in the agenda is an example of what the certificate of election looks like, as well as the official oath and acceptance of office, so. If there's no further discussion, we'll call for a vote, just indicate yes or no, and Caitlin calls the roll.
Grant Shepard?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes.
Scott Demel?
Yes.
Katie Youngberg?
Yes.
Adida Mansfield?
Yes.
Charlie Prebe?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes. All right, motion carries unanimous. All right, we are done with resolutions, so. Moving on, can I get a motion for item D?
I'll make a motion, we approve the disposal of the gymnastics floor.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion?
I have a friend who uses that, who's the coach with the gymnastics, helps with it. They love their new floors, they're so excited. So, they're happy to get rid of this.
Long time coming.
Yeah, it is.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item E?
I'll approve the rate for out-of-district non-public transportation, or make a motion to approve it.
Thank you.
Second.
A first and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And can I get a motion for item F?
I'll make a motion, we approve the reviewed policies that were reviewed at the last finance committee, or policy committee meeting, that would be 721, 806, 807, 808, and 903, which are also listed on our website for anyone to read.
Thank you.
Second.
A first and a second, any discussion? All right, hearing none, we will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. All right, that is the end of our action items for tonight. Upcoming items and reminders, next week is Thanksgiving, so the district will be closed November 24th and 25th for the Thanksgiving break. Our next work session is Thursday, December 1st, and then our next regular meeting is Thursday, December 15th.